I'm gonna call the the meeting of the Marvin Planning Board for Tuesday, April 20th to order. We have a quorum with myself, Michael Lovell, Kim, Parag, and Miranda. In attendance?
Wait, I think you butchered that a little bit.
Go around the table again.
Oh, okay.
Kelly and Melinda.
Melinda and Parag. Parag and Michael.
And we're missing Kent and Mark.
Kent and Mark Peterson. So we do have a quorum. Has everyone reviewed the agenda as presented? Any comments, additions, deletions? Make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
Need a second?
Need a second?
Melinda's second.
Melinda?
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay, unanimous? Next. Item on the agenda is adoption of the minutes of the special meeting of March 17th. Has everyone reviewed these? Any comments, additions, changes? Saying none? Make a motion to adopt? Need a second? Kim? Or Kelly, excuse me.
I use the names correctly.
I understand the confusion. Kim's name is right under Kelly's picture, so it's all in agreement, so it's understandable.
All in, yeah, the both case. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Next, we have the public comment period.
Okay, we do have two that have been submitted.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and read those.
Oh, are these written in writing?
Yeah, these were submitted to me today by email. Okay, so the first is from Christine Bonfardino Wilkins of 408 Streamside Lane. Quote, "I am a resident of Cantorfield Creek and am concerned about the newly proposed, the estates at Marvin Branch subdivision. My first and foremost concern is the traffic slash speeding impact this new subdivision will have on Joe Carr Road. As anyone who drives, as anyone who lives along Joe Carr Road will know, speeding has always been a big concern on this road. People routinely drive 50 miles per hour plus on a road with a 35 mile per hour speed limit. There has also been a pedestrian fatality on Joe Carr Road and Wheatfield Lane. On an area of Joe Carr Road that sees a lot of pedestrian traffic on a regular basis, I am worried that this could happen again. My second concern is the impact that another subdivision will have on our schools. Yes, our schools may not be as greatly overcrowded as some in the Valentine area, however, with increased public, with increased building of subdivisions, it's only a matter of time before our schools become as crowded as theirs. Students at Marvin Ridge High School have to share lockers because there aren't enough for each of them. That fact right there should show you how much growth in our area has had in the last decade or so. If the estates at Marvin Branch subdivision were to get approved, I would greatly like to understand what, if anything, will be done to Joe Carr Road to alleviate the traffic and speeding issues that it will inevitably cause, as well as the impact on our public school system, the anticipated num, meaning the anticipated number of additional students. Thank you for including my comment in today's meeting minutes." And the second comment is from Roxanne Morgan of 9719 Robinwood Lane. Quote, "I just learned about the proposed 20-home development off Joe Carr Road. I cannot attend the meeting tonight but wish to voice my concern about the impact that this will have, not only in the increase in traffic slash access to Joe Carr Road, but in the loss of open green space for our village. I have lived in Marvin for almost 30 years and have witnessed this happen. With short-sighted gain outweighing long-term ecologically responsible use of the land, I hope this proposal will be reconsidered." And that's the end of that.
Okay, we have several additional people online or any of these interested in making a public comment?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period. Moving on to items of discussion. Discussion of the major subdivision sketch plan for the estates at Marvin Branch.
Okay.
Turn it over to Rohit.
I'll start it off.
To start.
Yes. So let me share my screen real quick. Okay, so this is a new subdivision proposal for a 28-acre piece of land, which is on Joe Carr Road near Marvin Road. The proposal is currently actually now 16 houses, and that was reduced from 20 because of the the stream buffer. The Six Mile Creek is on the north side. This is a, this, north is facing to the left in this picture. Six Mile Creek itself is on the left side of this picture, and Marvin Branch is adjacent to this property on the west side. So this subdivision is being proposed under our conservation subdivision ordinance, which allows some lots to be 25%, uh, 25,000 square feet. 20% of the lots with 25,000 square feet, the remaining have to have at least 30,000 square feet, and in exchange, you don't build on at least 15 to 30% of the land. So ultimately, the density of this property, the residential density, is 16, 16 homes on 28 acres, which is almost half, like 0.57 units per acre. And I was just talking to another resident today, did that calculation, and realized that's one of the the least dense major subdivisions that has been proposed in recent Marvin history, so there's that. Those are all the really the zoning concerns, the description here. One, one factor that would be a little different than other major subdivisions is that they're requesting this view shed here to be dropped to the minimum of 85 feet depth, which is allowed if there is some sort of complication with the property, not like a variance, but there is a provision here that village council can reduce the view shed buffer to 85 feet if there is a hardship on the property due to physical constraints of the property. Not that, like I said, not that they have to go through a variance process, but that is something that they're requesting because they've lost a lot of developable land because of the the 200-foot buffer of the Six Mile Creek being on two sides, Six Mile Creek and Marvin Branch being on two sides of this property. So now on to the process, where it is in the procedure. Parks and Rec, Parks, Rec and Greenway, bless you. Parks, Rec and Greenway Board has seen the application at their previous meeting. They have recommended the addition of some greenway easements, which, bless you.
Bless you.
Aren't on this version, but they were roughly located here. And in any case, this is a first pass to the planning board. The public input meeting is scheduled for May 5th. 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. will be onsite and 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. will be in Village Hall with a virtual option that we'll set up. So, yes.
Okay, can I have a quick question?
Yes, who's that?
It's Kelly.
Oh, okay.
Or Cham, or Ken, or whoever's trying to call me today, I don't really care. I also answered them all, so that'd be a little weird. Is this, this is the property where they were hoping to have pasture, like open pasture potentially for horses? Is this, is this still the case, or is this really just an open space now and not pasture?
Well, to my knowledge, this property had some of Argy's cows on it, but he's moved his cows off quite a few months ago. This is not to be confused with the property directly south, or sorry, directly west of this property, who the gentleman there still has his two horses and a donkey in this property over here.
Rohit, this is Melinda, I've got a quick question. With the the setback being requested to go down to 85 feet, what is the current requirement that we would be changing it from to 85 feet?
The current requirement is an equation. And, let's see. I didn't, I didn't really figure out what that would be. There is an equation, though. Let's see, here it is. 80 plus 5 times the total acreage, so, um, just math. Plus 80, that would be 222 feet would have been the required view shed now.
And then the wording for why we do it is a hardship based on, can you go back to that verbiage?
Sure, yes, here. The required view shed buffer would impose a substantial hardship on the property owner due to unique physical constraints of the property, up to a minimum of 85 feet. And applicants are requesting that, because the the State Department of Environmental Quality requires a 200-foot buffer on two sides of the property, that's a significant reduction in the available space to put homes, to the point where they couldn't even fit homes on almost this whole entire side of the the road.
Okay, but that, I mean, we didn't add that creek, right? Like, that was there when the property was acquired?
Um, yes.
I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm just asking if there has been a change in the requirements associated with lakes or creeks or waterways, or was that 200-foot constraint there when the plans for this were initially made? Like, is, I guess, like, I guess my question is, is are we arguing that it's a hardship because of a feature that was there when the land was purchased and these, and the plan was put into place? Like, is that a hardship, or is like, or does it abut a creek?
Well, let me ask, maybe ask that in a different way. Rohit, if, if the, if the Marvin Stream or Marvin Creek were not there, just for conversation, what, what constraints would be on the property? You know, is that, is that a, you know, screw of a plus, I mean, a way to analyze it?
Yeah, that, I think that is a good, you know, all.
And I'm not taking sides, I'm just trying to analyze both.
Right. Without the creek, they would, they would have proposed like their original submission of 20 homes. On 20 of those homes, you know, being on pretty much equally on both sides of the street, there wouldn't be as much of a reduction of buildable area up here.
Are creeks considered a hardship or a water feature?
Thank you, that would be a next question.
I, I, I'm not sure that, I think that is, that is a board, a board question to determine. I'm not sure about that. At, at today's meeting.
But hardship, hardship isn't opinion, then. There's no set definition of what a hardship is.
Let me look through the variance section to see if that's defined.
Also, while you're looking, do we know the size of these homes that are coming in?
Uh, size of the homes, yes, they would be pretty large homes. The applicant was saying that they would be, you know, two to three stories, fairly large homes. I think the applicant could answer that question better.
They're gonna make a presentation soon as we get.
I'm not sure that they're giving a presentation today, it might be at the next meeting.
Oh, okay, I thought that was filed.
Okay, so what do we, what do we ask with the next, just to look at the site plan and offer opinions or suggestions?
Yes, today, today's the first pass. Perhaps if you're not ready to consider whether recommending that view shed reduction, the public input meeting will occur on May 5th, after which the applicant would be compelled to make certain revisions as, as applicable, based on the comments of those, those meetings. And then, at the May Planning Board meeting, this will come back to you once again for your, for your actual analysis, the real presentation and recommendation of.
So, or just take a look at it and what you think? We're not, we're not gonna make any decisions, we're not gonna do anything?
Not today, not, no, I'm not requesting it.
We did want to make a few comments. Anything? I was just saying, we did want to make comments tonight if that was possible.
Are you the developer?
Yes, yes, and I put the.
Yeah.
I put the, the land designer's names on the agenda so that they could have the floor as well, um, if they're. I think, as I was, was looking at the agenda, like, format, if they're the ones on the agenda, then they're, you don't need to take a vote to let them speak.
Can I ask one more question? The way that it's set up here, Rohit, is that with an 85-foot buffer, or is it 200 and whatever that's required?
This is the 85-foot buffer.
So it's say, if we put in the 200 and whatever's required, how many homes do we lose?
Two.
Two?
No target coming up.
Yeah, probably two.
Was there any thought, I mean, since we're throwing around things of having the road, who is the developer? I'm sorry?
Developer is Jones Homes, and the, the land designer is, land design.
Jones Homes, okay. Is, is Mr. Jones with us?
Nope.
Um, I think.
Beth, can you with Jones?
You're with, you're with Jones, okay. I mean, I'm sure you.
I'm not. I'm the site designer, but Ben is also here.
Okay, yes, yeah, let me, let me introduce. Let me introduce some people. So we have with us today, Mark Keim and Rob Cloud are here from Land Design, and Ben Kuhn is here representing Jones Homes. Did I get that correct, everyone? Awesome, all right.
Yes.
And is that in Jones Homes, okay.
Yes. Um, so I think there are, there are a few questions now that I think might be able, we might be able to turn it over to the applicants to answer some questions about the houses proposed and the view shed buffer and how that conversation came to be.
Yeah, I'll start and I'll let Ben then hop in and answer some questions about their product, but thank you, members of the board, for having us here tonight, just to give us some initial feedback on this plan. As, as mine's Mark Keim, I'm a landscape architect with Land Design in Charlotte. The project we're proposing, and the reason we're asking for the view shed buffer reduction, and if we go back to the plan, I think we've actually submitted a revised plan where we could actually do the full length, the full width buffer on the western side of our main road. We are really only looking for the, the reduction down to 85 feet on the eastern side, and the reason we're asking for that, it's a couple reasons. One, we feel it's in line with the buffer that exists from Marvin Creek, as well as the buffer on opposite side of the road. And with the Marvin, with Marvin Branch and the Six Mile Creek, you can see there's an existing floodplain, but on top of the floodplain, because of the presence of the Carolina hill splitter, we have to offset 200 feet from the top of the bank, which Park sees where the floodplain goes, which, as Rohit mentioned, it really does eat up a lot of the buildable area. I think initially our first plan had 20-some homes, and really, and it just was a double Logan Street. Yes, that's exactly how that, that would look, as far as our new plan is proposed. So, with that, yeah, and with that reduction in mind, if we went back to a full 285-foot wide buffer on the eastern side, we would probably lose two homes. Additionally, we'll, you know, we've agreed in principle with the Parks and Greenway Board to go ahead and not only dedicate the easement, but we'll actually construct a natural surface trail within that greenway easement, stubbing it out to the Marvin, Marvin Creek subdivision to the edge of the property line, and I guess it would be up to their HOA to make that connection if they ever do. We'd also stub to the north, in case there's a connection there, maybe across Six Mile Creek. Ben, if you wanted to talk a little bit about your product, and what's, what other products you guys have done in the area, I'll let you speak for now. Oh, Ben, you're on mute. I still can't hear Ben.
Guys, hit the unmute button.
I know he's done this before, it seemed good. Well, as far as other products in the area, I'm, Ben can figure it out. If you guys are familiar with the Falls of Weddington subdivision, Jones has built a number of the larger homes in there. Their product waste points generally start to, I think about 800,000 going up, large, four, five, and six-bedroom homes, two- to three-story. It's a very high-end product. Well, this is a, a smaller subdivision, we haven't had any conversations yet with DOT. I've heard the residents' comments about the speed on Joe Carr Road, and whether the determinants require, we don't know at this time, we haven't approached DOT yet, but we are aligning with Helena Court, which is an existing private drive to make that connection. And, and just because of the size of the subdivision, we haven't gone through any kind of school impact study. I guess it's the board and councils that wanted us to, we decided to engage in that kind of study, so, really, we're here to get in the feedback you guys have, and like I said, public confirmation meetings are coming up at the beginning of May, and we'll be back before Planning Board sometime later in May.
I think those studies would actually help you if you did them.
Okay.
I think, I, from what I, from what I see, I think that would actually be beneficial if you did those studies, I think they would tilt in your favor.
Okay.
And so you're saying these will be the same two-to-three-story homes with, well, it's hard to say in these days what home values, but probably starting around 800,000?
Ben, yeah, Ben.
Ben, turn your head. I haven't figured out that unmute button, no? All right.
Mic, like, device.
Let me see, that's good. I'm sure you've done many site plans, but before coming to this one, now this looks like it borders, if I'm correct, Marvin Creek, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
If we just look at the pictures, north and south, let's just call it that way, because I don't see a north arrow on the, on the site plan. Rohit, can you put the site plan back up?
So, yeah, we'll say just plain north, that's Marvin.
Yeah, let's just play north, and if, if we're just, I don't see a north arrow, but let's just call north just the top of the page, is that Marvin Creek?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I, I'm not muted, yes. This is now, north is up, I just rotated the screen for you. North is up-ish and to the right.
East Marvin Creek.
Yes, so the east is Marvin Creek, to the, the west is Marvin Road. Uh, not the immediate west, but.
So we have the, right next to this, we have those two alpacas, I think, if I'm correct?
I think they're.
That's the smaller.
Is that right?
Are they alpacas? I thought they were horses, but.
No, alpaca.
Alpaca, oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
And then across the screen, is that Elysian Field?
That is correct.
Okay, so the road you have there is connecting into Elysian Fields. Is this the same type of conservation district that Elysian Fields has?
That is correct. They had also 25,000 square feet and 30,000 square feet homes in the Elysian Fields neighborhood.
Gotcha. How, how long is the conservation, if we rank this, how, how long do they have until they have to build? Or is it unlimited?
They have vested rights once they start the application process. Each stage of the process has a, like, a time limit that you have to at least start. It's like one year or two year after approval, something like that.
All right, I'm just curious, because Elysian Fields been, been more than two years, but not, that doesn't have anything, what I was asking is, I'm sure you did many site plans, is there any way, I guess, since we're close to Marvin Creek, of running the, the entrance road kinda on the east side of the property and pushing the homes west? Have you run a scenario like that, and if so, does that produce less homes, more homes, or maybe you haven't done that yet?
We haven't done that, and just assuming any conversations we had with DOT, does it, they more than likely want us to align it with Helena? Now, they could come back and tell us otherwise, but just generally, my experience, it's never really the case if there's the opportunity to align. Well, I mean, do it necessarily like that.
I'm not saying not align it, but that road could just go immediately east and then run along Marvin Creek. You have to just start there and just run it east and push these homes south, it gives you a little bit more buffer from the backyards of Marvin Creek, that's all. Just a thought.
Where's the, the two?
Yeah, something like that.
Where's the 200 feet from the creek?
And it doesn't, that, that 200-foot buffer doesn't show very well in this plan. That's just the floodtuck inland, there's a 200-foot buffer line that, that, that location of the waterway is really following that line at this point? Yeah, it's something like that.
Okay.
Something like that.
What are the, what's that there, Rohit? What are you doing?
I'm drawing that 200-foot buffer.
Well, that's 200-foot, oh, okay.
If this is the, if this is the creek, I mean, uh, maybe I'll do it down. Let's see, I'm drawing the creek in blue. Yeah, this is the, the actual Six Mile Creek, and this is Marvin Branch, which would have the same limitations as the creek, Six Mile Creek, so that's the next one I have.
That creek overflows, that creek has pretty bad overflow issues, like it, it comes up pretty far onto the banks when we get a lot of rain, so we want to just.
Yeah, we've all signed up, you're right, Kelly, we've all seen that on Joe Carr, it flooded part of Elysian Fields. Absolutely. Well, when is the, when is the field trip onsite that we can, we can walk the, walk the site with you? I thought it was, is it May 5th?
Yeah, May 5th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. is the, the onsite part, and then 5:00 to 7:00 would be the Village Hall part.
All right. Well, Mark, I know.
I think the only, the only other thing I would think about moving that road to the eastern property line is a lot of homeowners, I think, would frown on having vehicles, you know, on their back yard versus backing up to them, or whatever, you could, you could add additional buffering, but just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine was just a thought, too. I didn't, I'm, I was thinking, you probably ran dozens of site plans, and I just, I just wanted to see what your thoughts were, if you ran it on the east side. I get the, the road coming and the cars traveling in the backyard, but that was just a thought of mine when I saw this, just to give, give everybody a little bit more room, even. Sure, but I'll, I'll, we'll take a look, I mean, I'll be, I'll, I'll try to be out there May 5th if we can look at it as well then.
Okay.
Okay.
Once again, this will come back as a more final version after the public input meetings comments are incorporated, so are there any other questions?
Rohit, just, just, even though there's been no development on Elysian Fields.
Oh, yes.
What's the, the view shed buffer?
They're, they actually do have two different view shed buffers here, just like Mark was saying that he would propose in the next round. I will have to measure that, though, because I don't know that. But I did want to make one comment regarding that, which was, Elysian Fields neighborhood is actually completed as construction in terms of the infrastructure. They've got the road, the water and sewer, they've got their bonds released. The only thing they haven't finished is their erosion control, which you do normally after finishing the houses. So, as opposed to getting a construction plan approved and then not starting anything, that would perhaps invalidate your construction plan approval, but not in Elysian Fields case where they have actually not only started, but completed all of the infrastructure.
Sure, appreciate that. Sure, appreciate that.
Rohit, I'm sorry, I, um, I was having connectivity issues a second ago, um, so I apologize that this has already been covered, but, uh, you guys, um, suggested any traffic calming techniques, um, at the entrance to help with slowing traffic down? I know this is not necessarily, um, an issue that they have to solve as developers, but, you know, anything they could do at your entrance to help with that, um, also helps with the public input meeting.
Hmm. Have you, um, thought of that, um, developers versus land design?
Have we, have we discussed any traffic calming measures with DOT this time? No, they haven't yet.
Okay. I think, uh, like Michael Lovell said, I would agree, um, if you were to have some of these conversations, it would,
Yeah.
it would definitely benefit you in the process. Um, in any case, now that you've.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I've pulled up Elysian Fields buffers, they did have an eighty-five foot buffer on the far side of the branch, and then they had the hundred and fifty-five foot buffer on the, the near side of the branch. Hundred and fifty.
What was their, uh, what was the hardship in that case?
Um, I couldn't answer that for you today, because I was, this happened long before me. Um, but.
Oh, I don't think it.
I, if I were to hazard a guess, it would be exactly the same thing. The creek on this side has, uh, um, taken up a lot of the buildable area. As opposed to a perfectly flat piece of land, like, maybe, um.
More of an.
Yeah, yeah.
Got you.
So that's, I guess, a good point. There is a precedent for what, um.
Correct.
For doing that. It's actually really nice to have this, uh, approved subdivision right across the street, same conditions, same type of, um, conservation district. Um, and in this case, they actually had one really long property, um, and then fit one more home, like, in the area that wasn't in the, the floodplain. Um, I don't know.
Rohit, I think a long piece of property, I think, that was dedicated to the HOA, I don't think they were putting a home on that long skinny piece.
Um.
Maybe not.
Is that right? Um.
Because it's in the floodplain.
It, it mostly was in the floodplain, but as I saw it, I remember seeing a building envelope right here where that yellow dot is, uh, for one more house.
That, this was the property I thought about, I mean, it looks exactly like Elysian Fields, so I thought, I thought this was the one that was being presented initially. Um, but that was the one that was supposed to be pasture land where people could, you know, their horses.
Oh, this, I see, I see.
Yeah, that was my, my confusion.
Okay, so perhaps there was an option, but it might not ever be built because of the floodplain or buildable even. Um, anyhow.
So Rohit, is it possible for us, all right, Mark, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, with the floodplain there now and the presence of the hill splitter, there would actually probably be a, a greater buffer than what's already shown there. So, I doubt it's buildable.
So, I see, now Rohit, go back over the, the sequence of events to, you know, from.
Oh, from here?
Moving, you know, you've got the, the public input meetings.
Public input meeting is on May fifth. At that time, um, comments will be made and revisions will be had. Um, the Planning Board will see it for their final approval and at their, at your May meeting. Um, Parks, Rec and Greenway will give their final, uh, recommendations, sorry, I didn't mean approval, I mean recommendations, you know, with modifications or as proposed. At your May meeting, Parks and Greenway will give their final recommendations at their June meeting, and then the council would make their vote, um, at their June meeting.
It's assuming that everything, a, a, a normal sequence of, of timing.
Assuming, yeah, yeah, everything. Right. Right, as, supposing nothing crazy happens.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Rohit, is it possible then at our May meeting, when we're gonna see this again, to have the information on what the hardship was for the setback across the street? To know if it, like, to, if, if it's in the minutes somewhere for us to know what was defined?
Um, yeah, sure, uh, we'll make a note of it and see if we can look through the, um, the minutes or the, the documentation for that subdivision.
Give it to me one more time.
Um, to determine the discussion that occurred to reduce the Elysian Fields buffer to eighty-five feet. In the, in the, that subdivision's process.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look into it, thank you.
Got it.
Yeah. Good point. Any other questions or comments, anyone? Our presenters, anybody?
I don't believe so.
All right.
Um, but you guys, um, thank you for coming, um, maybe the rest of the meeting will interest you, maybe not.
Thank you very much.
So we'll, we will look forward.
Thanks for the feedback, Jay.
To, to the next steps.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on.
Thank you.
All right. Next, next item, uh, reminder of the statement of economic interest in code of ethics forms, Austin.
Uh, there is no point in me speaking about this, because everyone who is present has turned them, turned them in, so.
Excellent.
Good.
That's a way of me saying someone who is not here has not.
So we picked up about four and a half minutes there.
Awesome.
Moving on, uh, discussion of code reorganization, changes to the ordinance required by NC General Statute one sixty D and other minor revisions. Rohit.
Awesome, so this is coming down the pipeline. Um, we're required to adopt the, uh, changes required by, um, the one sixty D state statute by July first. Um, they're all required changes, so, um, some of them are interesting and most of them aren't not. Um, but there, there are just a lot of clarifications for rights of, um, the towns and the developers. There are some clarifications on definitions, um. They just wanted to simplify and streamline and, uh, and in some cases, just homogenize the way that municipalities, um, handle, um, certain factors of development. So, um, we're almost done at a staff level reviewing, um, the consultant was hired, uh, last year, and they completed, at the same time as, uh, they completed a code reorganization, which was, um, which was on the books before I, um, joined, so I'm not sure, um, the process of that, but, um, a code reorganization to simplify our, um, development guidelines, uh, not guidelines, regulations, and kind of organize them better. Um, that occurred, then the changes that were required by one sixty D occurred at the same time. And then finally, there were about ten or so, um, other minor changes that, um, I've been basically kind of stockpiling as not urgent, but needs to be done eventually. Um, some definitions, some updates, bookkeeping things, typos. Um, all of those will be presented at the May meeting. Um, and that is basically my update, uh, for this agenda item. Um, since, uh, Kim is on the phone here today, I also wanted to mention that, um, after we had a conversation about definition of dwelling, um, it has now been, um, it, it's been made clear to me that the state, uh, statute of one sixty D actually requires us to adopt a definition of dwelling that they have, and all municipalities have to adopt this definition of dwelling.
So it will be statewide definition?
Yes, yes, yes. It was one of about four words that, uh, the state, as part of one sixty D, said all municipalities have to adopt this definition of dwelling, dwelling unit, sleeping unit, um, and some other things. Um, so, uh, what I will do is I'll make sure that, um, so we have to adopt those definitions, but I'll make sure to go through the code and, uh, make sure that our, uh, you know, discussions, the intention of, you know, having accessory dwelling units, um, you know, that we, there was a discussion on both Planning Board and Council that they would, there is not a desire to have detached, uh, dwelling units like a live-in unit, so I'll make sure that, uh, even though we have to have certain definitions, that the regulations that use those definitions reflect the intention of these boards. So those are, those are it, um, really, um, and then the next item, um, which is another item, so I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I'll, I'll sort, it sort of segues into that.
Yes.
And your, the, uh, agenda packet that was sent to you, you know, prior was
The whole list of changes, yes.
basically all, all of those list of changes, uh, I'm not sure whether.
Some of them are not applicable, and I didn't, um, get the chance to kind of filter through all of them and pick out the ones that are not applicable. Basically, one sixty D requires all these, uh, uh, things to be in compliance, and in our case, um, several of them are already in compliance. So we will not have to revise anything. However, as you saw, the list was very long, and, um, I was, um, I wanted to bring to this board today the option to add a consent agenda to the next meeting's agenda, where, um, today would not be the vote on those things, but merely to add that section of, uh.
To the agenda.
To the agenda.
Yeah, it, it basically is, is everyone comfortable with the concept of having a consent agenda where we approve?
I will use my discretion to place.
Yeah, ninety, well, ninety percent of those changes, you know, in, in bulk, instead of, instead of, you know, a hundred and fifty individual votes.
Right. Very common sense.
And I'm not sure how many there were, but there were, how many pages?
There were like three or four pages.
Yeah, three or four, because I actually went through and read them and, but, you know, most of them seemed like housekeeping kind of things.
They really are.
Really. Uh, and then, not to say that we can't, before the next meeting, after you receive the, the, uh, agenda item then, you know, by sitting in on the, the council meetings, I see council moving some things off of the consent agenda and wanting to vote on item number twenty-seven individually, you know, diffusing that.
That's correct.
So it's not meaning that, that we would automatically approve all of them in bulk, uh, if we, if we've got a problem with one or two or however many items.
That's correct.
Uh, any feeling about that concept?
So, so how many are you talking about here?
Um, there are about a hundred different changes, roughly.
Yeah, uh, it's in here, isn't it?
Yes, it's, it's all of the, all of the things that are required are in the packet in bullet form.
Yeah.
And then there is another page of my list of ten, again, bookkeeping items, roughly, uh, ten of them.
One, two, three. Uh.
Oh, I see, it's.
Yeah.
It's pages, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. So twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three in our, uh, the pack, our agenda packet.
Yeah. Yeah, it's about three, 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 three pages.
And you're saying if we have, uh, if we have any questions about that, we can pull it off the consent agenda and, and discuss it and vote on it?
That's correct. That would happen during the adoption of the agenda.
Yeah. During, yeah, during the adoption of the agenda.
That's fine. I'm fine with that, as long as we, as long as, uh, we have the right to pull something out that, uh, we have questions or don't, you know, understand, then, um, I have no problems.
And please call us before the meeting too, if you have questions, that's no problem that.
Mm-hmm.
Rohit, most likely we'll be answering the questions, but that, that's also a productive way to go about this.
To expedite it, you know, instead of, you know, even if the agenda's out, you know, and call ahead so that we can make plans for.
Right, um, so Austin, would you think that they need to take a vote, or is a consensus acceptable?
Uh, technically, a consensus would be acceptable, but I think they should vote on it technically, since this is gonna result in the fast tracking of a lot of revisions.
Yeah, okay, uh, shall I make a motion?
Sure.
I, I make a motion that we, uh.
Add a consent agenda?
Add a consent agenda item to the next month's, uh, Planning Board meeting to cover all the, uh, the revisions as a result of.
One sixty D.
One sixty D. Does that sound right?
I'm saying.
Close enough.
All right, second, Michael, all in favor? Unanimous?
Aye.
Aye.
This will definitely make the May meeting go a lot faster.
And you know we like that.
Yes.
Yeah, canary with that.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent.
All right, uh, discussion.
So we've finished three and four, kind of simultaneously.
Yes, three and four.
Good, good.
Uh, recap of the previous Marvin Heritage District Meeting, discussion of the form-based code draft zoning that was in your packet.
Awesome, um, so the May, um, what's this, April, April meeting was, uh, not held due to a lack of quorum. Um, however, um, in that time, um, at a staff level, we've decided that is definitely time to, uh, make the form-based code be the way that we, um, approach this district. Um, there was a lot of public feedback, um, and, um, concern about assigning densities. Um, I think people are just concerned about discussing density at all. So in a form-based code, we would basically assign, uh, areas of the district and, uh, certain housing types that would be allowed, housing types, I mean, building types, uh, that would be allowed in each district. Um, and so while the, what's in your packet is basically the, just the beginning, and today I would really just like to discuss this concept in, you know, just as, as, and, and not the, the contents. Um, however, um, essentially, um, the content is still roughly what it would be, where in the residential district, we would only propose, um, houses that already exist in Marvin. Um, in the, uh, the more detailed version that I'm still working on, the, the transitional density is incorporated in it, um, in terms of, um, what is adjacent existing versus what is allowed in the district. Um, and I've put, um, you know, the Marvin vernacular housing type is the only thing allowed adjacent to, uh, rural housing, um, stuff like that, and then the mixed-use district would have some commercial and some residential. Um, and then these are the types of housing, et cetera. Commercials-only section would, you know, be allowed to have those kinds of housing types, and there, and the setbacks and the building types are explained here. And then finally, um, well, there's an existing house-only section where these two properties would only be allowed to have the existing house. Um, and, you know, limited editions that make, um, you know, that still preserve the, the quality of the house if they desire. Um, and then, of course, a civic district, which would only allow, um, church vernacular and government vernacular as applicable. And then it goes on to describe what the housing, uh, building types actually are by, uh, you know, visualizations. Um, in the Marvin vernacular, I, we basically, um, I had a pretty good work session with our planning consultant, um, and we extracted what we, what he likes to call the, the DNA of the Marvin area houses, and, uh, kind of assigned, you know, what they look like in terms of size, footprint, height. Um, and up here, uh, there's also setbacks. Um, and then, uh, and then we, we went on to say, you know, these smaller homes, um, but I'm actually gonna make them have larger lots than the amber meadows and courtyards, because, um, you know, to, you know, to reduce the effective density even, even further, so. Um, just talking about really the concept here, cottage-style commercial, you know, we have these, uh, several examples. This is the crane home, they will, uh, crane store, they would, um, restore that, of course. Um, but this is a cottage type, um, this is a village house type, um, and they, they would look like these. Um, all, um, detached individual buildings, um, and then so, um, you wouldn't be, you, you wouldn't be confused at all about what this district would look like if you're walking through. These building types would be allowed in these districts. And, um, and then, of course, there was conversation about allowing, um, one, like, ten thousand or fifteen thousand square foot, like, uh, like a small retail, um, small grocery store kind of thing. We looked at Reeds a little bit, and then we looked at other, uh, commercial buildings that look like they could be barns. look like they could be barns, um, but they're actually some sort of, um, retail space, and then of course, um, our beautiful publics over here, which would not, you know, the maximum size of such a building would be not even a third of that publics, but the architecture is really a good, um, you know, thing to base off of, because that is something that we, um, as a village did agree upon at some point. Um, we would allow commercial if it looked like this kind of concept. Um, so that's, that's what I wanted to show you so far, basically, the difference, the main difference here between a Form-Based Code and a conventional district is a Form-Based Code gives its regulation through imagery and, um, the building types, whereas a conventional type of district would give the regulations through, um, density and, and more textual um, regulations, um, and this way seems to be the way that, um, would be very amenable to, I think, all the boards and all the residents, um, to really be able to see what this district would look like. Um, any questions?
Yeah, let me start, but, you know, you know, you're, you're showing, you know, a lot of photos of, you refer to it as Marvin vernacular homes, existing homes in Marvin. Where would those be allowed?
Um, in fact, those buildings, uh, now, here's again, uh, a really cool part about the Form-Based Code, you go to that.
Yeah, I'm talking about that.
Right.
Architecture.
Right, you go to this building type, um, glossary, and right here is the table of all the districts, all the sub-districts that this type of building would be allowed. So essentially, I, I, I've indicated here, I think it would be prudent to allow Marvin vernacular buildings in all the districts except civic.
Well, you know, doesn't, doesn't that architecture go totally, uh, against, you know, the, the concept of the heritage district being an old district? You know, yeah, because my concept is that anything that was built would look like it had been here for a hundred years, just like the church, you know, and the crane store, et cetera.
I see, um, that's a good point, so.
I mean, that's just my, you know, that's just my blush on it, and anybody else, please jump in and your comment about that sort of thing.
Sure.
It's a good point, John.
Okay, um, if, uh,
I don't, I don't like to answer it, but it's, it's something that we should definitely consider and talk about.
Sure, I think, uh, in that case, maybe removing this from the commercial-only part of it might be, um, prudent, but um, since the residential and the mixed-use areas would have, um, a good bit of housing, um,
But, but couldn't they be built like some of the, the other, you know, that, that look?
They could, they could.
Wait, I'll, I'll use, I'll use example of the, uh, all of a sudden the name escaped me, the subdivision, Wade-Aldrey Road at the turn.
Hmm, I think I know what you're talking about, the, like, the Dr. Seuss neighborhood.
Uh.
I, I like to call it the Dr. Seuss neighborhood, or the cotton candy neighborhood, I know what you're talking about, this one I can.
The old Harley.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, you know.
Charleston-style moms.
Yeah, I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying packed, but that looks.
Not that packed, but the building type.
But, but that looks a whole lot older than the Marvin vernacular home.
Sure, sure, um, that's a good point, perhaps just remove the Marvin vernacular and cause the, the village house, the, the Charleston, the Greek Revival, Southern Colonial, um, to be, to have the same kind of parameters as a Marvin vernacular home, but not, uh, that kind of architecture, you can see that.
I mean, especially if we're calling for the commercial buildings to look.
To be allowed to be that kind of building, yeah.
To look like that, then, you know, you know, the, you know, the houses would look out of place.
Mm-hmm. Yes, additionally, one thing about Form-Based Code is that you could choose any building type and put any use in it that would fit. So, since a lot of the building types are residential, um, but we would still allow commercial to be in them, you, you, you'd be, you know, you'd be walking down the street and, I mean, maybe walking down Newtown Road here, and you see a lot, a lot of buildings that look like houses, but are actually stores.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in that case, they could potentially choose a Marvin vernacular home, and, uh, um, it would kind of be out of place that that was a commercial use, as opposed to, um, let's see. Bluffton was a, a real big inspiration, both in the form and the actual Form-Based Code document. Um, because, you know, we go to Bluffton and it's, uh, old, Old Town, ah, this Old Town District, and then there are a lot of, I think I dropped it in the street over that I wanted to, there are a lot of, there is a lot of this, um, there's a lot of, you know, this, the, what we just saw in the neighborhood over there, Southern Colonial style, but it's a store, and then, you know, this is a very cottage, it's actually called a cottage, but it's a restaurant. It's, it was very busy when I went there, um, that's where I went on vacation last week. Um.
His vacations are also site visits.
Yeah, that's an art gallery, I think, um, but it clearly looks like a house if, you know, if it didn't have that very quaint little sign, you'd think it's a house.
And, and Bluffton, it is not that old a community anyway. It, it really is old and relatively new, it looks like. Bless you.
Thanks. Anyway, um, I, I, I.
I think if you can make the, if you can make the Heritage District look like Bluffton, that'd be a home run.
I think we're really getting there with this Form-Based Code, um, that would allow these kinds of houses, of course, I'm having, I'm calling for greater setbacks, um, to fit more of, uh, you know, this, uh, I, I've heard from many people, they want to still feel this, uh, rural feeling while driving down Newtown Road, so I've called for greater front setbacks and greater side setbacks, but still, we're looking at the DNA, uh, of, you know, this, the feeling, what, what parameters of design make this feeling, and then that would be the code.
Okay, I'm, I'm still, you know, Michael, you're used to working with, uh, you know, zoning ordinances, et cetera, and that, you know, of course, I'm unfortunately a number of years out of the business now, but I'm trying to get my arms around understanding Form-Based Code, and, you know.
And the difference perhaps, I know it's, it's complicated, and it's new.
Well, then, it, it's, it almost feels like.
John, you and I are Form-Based Code guys, we, we love to see stuff, and that's basically what Form-Based Code is.
I guess, I'm, I'm just trying.
Instead of the written word, we see the visual, so you and I are, uh, Form-Based Code kind of guys.
I'm just trying to make sure that we don't allow someone to do something that we don't want done.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because it's not down to, you know, to the letter and, and feet and inches and et cetera. And, and this is, it's totally different code than I'm used to, to working with.
Right, in each of these sections, um, the, the sub-district sections, there will be, um, uh, other building types and setbacks will be allowed based on, uh, some minimum parameters that we put here, I haven't decided what those are there, so I just straight up didn't include them yet. Um, but there will be allowances for exceptions in the district, um, within these pages here, the district types.
Actually, there was just, it's, it's totally new to me, and I'm, I'm still trying to get my arms around it and, and.
Right. It is, it is fairly new, I'm, I think I still have the subdivision, uh, you know, this is a conventional subdivision, uh, ordinance, it's all text, and it states density. Um, you know, minimum requirement, we'll have, we'll have this too, I think we're looking at thirty percent of, of the properties of the developments must be public open space um, at this time, uh, which is actually really large, and I'm also thinking I would require, uh, I would put a requirement that they have to be public open space, not just unbuilt space, thirty percent. Um, viewshed buffers dimension, so this is kind of, this is what a conventional district code looks like. Um, it describes everything that you're allowed to do in text, um, and then there's densities, um, design standards, um, and over here, you'll see permitted uses, there'll still be permitted uses, but, um, we'll do it kind of as a matrix of, these uses are allowed in these sub-districts, um, so that, you know,
So we, so we don't end up with a metro store.
Right, 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 um, let me see if.
Very pretty-looking metro store.
Don't speak those words, guys.
I know, I've, I've.
We might even, we might be scrutinized for joking about it.
Um, can I ask, can I, um, make one statement and then have a question about how you deal with kind of the technical aspects, like
Sure.
sidewalks and, you know, all of the like infrastructure-type stuff around a building, and, um, how you deal that with that in Form-Based Code, but I wanted to make a statement first, um, I, I would just caution, like, I think you're, I think people's comments about wanting to feel like you're in a rural area driving down Newtown Road, while I agree with that on, on one level, one of the reasons that having that little downtown feel and having it walkable, A, walkable, I think your, your stores will actually survive if people, it's better economically, I think, if people actually walk to your store, but the other thing is like for traffic calming, like that was one of the whole points of this, was to slow everyone down and say, hey, you're entering an area of high, you know, for traffic. So like, we start to have bigger buffers and we start to hide everything, it kind of, we don't ca, we don't solve the traffic and the speed issue here.
Yes, exactly, exactly, I, I totally agree with that, and I've had to kind of balance that, those two concepts.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
Um, I would think that, you know, a thirty-foot, uh, front, uh, viewshed would make these buildings feel really close and make you wanna, make you wanna drive slow, but that would also get rid of the rural feeling. Then you take our eighty-five-foot current viewshed that's required, and that would make it feel too rural, like these buildings are not for you if you're walking down the street. So I'm thinking fifty feet is that kind of good happy medium there, um, and.
And I think, you know, back to Kelly's comment, you know, that, that sort of concept could explain some of the, the, the high-speed traffic on Joe Carr Road.
Right.
Because really, you're just driving down through there, uh, between, between burned buffers.
Yes, yes.
And you don't even, you know, yeah, you know their houses there, but it's not like you're driving down the street right here that, that you're showing right now.
Right.
You know, through Bluffton.
Over here.
Yeah.
So this is like, this is a thirty-foot buffer right here, thirty feet from the, huh, the, the edge of the sidewalk to the, the front of the balcony. Um, I would tend to think that we could probably do a little more of a buffer, so this guy over here, this guy over here is fifty, um, and, uh, uh, I think that's, that's, that's pretty decent, of course, our fifty feet would also consist of a much wider trail and a drainage ditch, uh, that would again contribute to the rural feel as opposed to a curb. Um, and then there would be less yard here, but that could also, there would be enough for some sort of seating, um, if there was a restaurant, um, as opposed to, you know, something like this, this is like ten feet, um, that is, uh, I mean, it still can feel rural, but not the same way as Marvin's rural.
I mean, I think there's also, you can split the difference too, and, and have, you know, larger buffers in those, um, you know, light commercial areas, and then just in that little, you know, one little section, which is going to be all denser, you know, you can, you can shrink the buffer so that the buildings are somewhat closer to the road um, with easier access, so, I mean, it doesn't have to be all over, right, it's just.
Right, yeah, that's a good idea.
And, you know, the other thing is, you know, in fact, so far, it's sort of hard for, go back to the commercial, them to put their front door, you know, to, to the street.
Right.
Where, you know, if they're eighty-five feet back.
Right.
Uh, whereas if they're up closer, it's easier for them to sell, this is the front door, come in.
Yes, exactly, um, so.
Then you don't have to keep a rubbernecking to look fifty feet back and then
Exactly, exactly.
and missing someone stop in front of them, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be a, that front buffer is gonna be a very important number uh, of the, the minimum, and I think that'll be further, you know, there'll be further conversations about this. And like I did here, I'll try to come up, you know, I'll try to come to you guys with, you know, what the feeling is, you know, like, more than just this, to say, you know, this is fifty, you know, and that's uh, thirty, you know, what do you think that would feel like, that's, that's.
Would, would we allow something in that buffer, you know, where there's, I mean, you know, there's seating and stuff.
Yes, yes. Yes, we could, it would be comfortable, yes, especially when we're specifically trying not to allow parking in those buffers, it would be prudent to allow something.
Yeah, because that makes it, you know, more riding.
Right, exactly.
Has it the crane store and the other existing little rental house, the brick little rental house next to, um,
Mm-hmm.
that private gated road?
Mm-hmm.
Um, haven't they already kind of established setbacks, I mean?
There is a precedent here, yes, that this, uh, um, this wooden, uh, sorry, this, uh, old, uh, nineteen hundreds bungalow has some sort of a, like, I think it's like a twenty or thirty feet setback here, um, and yes, you, you've got a point there, um, of course, we could do one of two things, you know, we could highlight those buildings by allowing all infill to be not clo, not closer to the road than that. Um, or we could mimic those buildings and allow infill to be as close to, um, the road. Like, you know, I, I, I think I should, I think I should rephrase that, um, the actual old buildings would be more prominent if they were closer to the road because they already were compared to the infill, that could be, uh, really, a really highlight of, you know, in a, from a design perspective, highlighting the heritage. There's two ways to think about it, that's the point.
And I think it's also one thing to think about them as a precedent versus thinking about them as getting grandfathered into something that's going to be a larger scale. Right, like, I don't know if they necessarily, if anything built in the last millennium may get grandfathered in versus
Although that's a pretty clever setback right there.
Yeah, this is, this is forty, although Google, um, Google Street View does this kind of fish eye thing, so everything kind of looks a little farther than it is, but this is, this is, uh, forty right here from the road.
Honestly, we don't want it too, too close to the road, especially if there's gonna be seating or something, because.
Yeah.
I, I'm so worried about that entrance right there, right off of that.
Yeah. I, I put it in the, the long-term plan to hopefully have a fourth leg of this roundabout and have cars be in the back and pedestrians be in the front. Maybe that happens, maybe that doesn't, maybe they have a shared driveway instead in the front, but, um, that is definitely a concern of mine as well. Um, I, I did want to show you some other things, this is the uses allowable matrix, um, that, if this wa, this, this is stuff that will be, all of this will be in the next agenda, this, this stuff I'm still working on. An uses allowable matrix would say, depending on the district you're in, you can either, you can do these things either, uh, uh, by right or by special use permit. Um, special use permit is what conditional use permits are gonna be called after one sixty D, so it's just the same thing. I'm just kind of preparing for that.
Is it literally just a name change?
It's just, in our case, it's a name change, but there were four different types of things that all municipalities were using, and they said, you have to do this and you have to call it this, don't do all that other stuff you're doing, so, but we were doing that, just calling it something different.
Gotcha.
Which is good for us, makes it simple, anyhow, so, uh, uses allowable matrix, again, I'm, today, I'm just asking you to um, lay your eyes on the, the format as opposed to the content, these are all the same uses that you guys, uh, looked at before. Um, and then additionally, uh, these are some uses that are kind of required by, uh, state to allow.
And then you, you, in addition to the, to the individual uses, you added, which we didn't see before, the permitted and special use.
Right. Right, right, I, and this is, this is my first pass at it, obviously, I have to propose thing, I have to do the the legwork to propose things, and then the committee, the planning board, and the council have to vote on them.
Yeah.
But, um, my, my first glance at, you know, what kind of uses would be allowable by right as opposed to um, by special use, uh, for example, I, I, I guess you guys would want to, uh, see a special use permit for. Uh, for example, I I I guess you guys would want to uh see a special use permit for a brewery, but uh something like a fitness studio which would be more quiet, um, and only in daytime hours might um be under permitted, and of course, again, um.
That's necessarily true.
I'm, I don't, I'm no, I'm, I don't know, this is my first, this is my first pass at it, and I I I have a feeling a lot of these Ps and Ss will be changed to Ss and maybe just removed potentially, I mean like I said, this is my first pass at it, I'm not proposing this table today, I'm just showing you that this is how the regulation would be.
Written, would be organized, stylized, yeah.
Written, yes, yes.
Alright.
Makes sense?
Okay.
Awesome, um.
Hmm, I think you're on the right track, Rohit, I mean, is this something that we're gonna go into a deep dive at the next Heritage District Committee?
Yeah. That's correct, at this, at this, you see this uh table of contents on the left here? Uh, half of it's basically fleshed out already, what you see in the packet today was only the building type standards and the district standards.
Yeah.
So half of this is already fleshed out and by the the Heritage Committee, like, most of it will be fleshed out and then by the Planning Board in May and then the the Heritage Committee in June and the Planning Board in June will be looking at a a full form-based code after all of your comments have been, you know, iterated into the content.
Is there um, how how and where does it do restrictions go about what people can, cause like one of the interesting things about the Bluffton uh the Bluffton tour you just took us on is that, you know, there's a lot of, like, if there's a flag store, they've got a little
Mm-hmm.
yard flags out there, and there's just a, there was like a lot of stuff
Yes, yeah.
in the front yards, right, and so like, my concern is like, you know, we're gonna have clothing racks out on the str- on the sidewalk and.
That would. Right. That would go in the streetscape section. Um, of course, we would be responsible for the infrastructure itself, but we would also regulate what their frontage could look like in terms of signage, merchandise, um, the plaza, we would require certain minimums and we would prohibit certain things, um like, you know, excessive uh, you know, flashiness perhaps, or even maybe colors, um, to create them earth and colors.
Or volume stuff, not the sign.
So so that's another part of this thing?
Yes, yes, everything visual would be regulated in some section of this code.
Okay, and and.
Here's the table of contents so that you can look at all, this is its entire, this is the table of contents right here on the left, it's in.
Oh, okay, that would be part of, cause I was, I was thinking landscaping and sidewalks and
Yes. Yes.
and trees and stuff, so that that's, that's in that table of contents already?
Yes, yes.
Alright, okay. And I guess to, to that K lady. Kelly, uh, uh, sign signage and stuff like that's, that's there.
That's, that's gonna be in there, signage, I I did have signage in the table of contents and might have not uh um. Yeah, I think I might have forgot to include that.
Okay, that's obvious, is.
But I didn't forget to think about it, it's in here somewhere, I didn't, I just didn't put it in the table of contents.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, sizes and ti- and style or types and stuff, you know, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I was actually thinking about that the other day when I was driving by, um
Mm-hmm.
I guess it's Providence down south and they're facing that one big area that might be developed and like, you know,
Mm-hmm. Right.
th- those signs should not be lit at night, cause that's.
Yes, yes.
Or whatever, yeah, they, yeah, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Incidentally, yeah, incidentally, I'm not sure, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with this, but we adopted a village center sign section in the big sweeping sign ordinance of twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. So miraculously, and and if I can switch to this real quick. The signage section in our current ordinance has a section on village center signage, so, um if that's fine, if that's fine with everyone, we can keep that, um. Let's see. I hope I can switch to this really quick. So I don't really waste too much time here. Uh, let me do a control F for. Uh, hello? Control F, village.
As long as we've outlawed balloon man.
Anyhow. I just, yeah. Hmm.
Only if he looks like he's a hundred years old.
Hmm.
And no French toast like standing out on the, on the, you know, side of the road advertising the breakfast place.
Hmm. Sorry, I know it's in here somewhere, it's just.
Well, yeah, we we, as long as we 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 know we have to address it.
Yeah. I'll I'll pull, I'll pull out that um, that side.
If you just pass it, like attach signs.
Uh.
Was that not it?
Maybe. Hmm. Um, I'm sorry, I'll I'll find, I'll find this by the next meeting, but I I've written it, I've written it down somewhere, but basically there is a section in our sign section that addresses village center district signs, um. We might just be able to borrow from that.
Well, okay.
You might wanna um add the words low country into your inscriptions as well, a lot of what you were showing at Bluffton is a low country um architectural style, it's a very southern.
Yes, yes, it's a good idea also.
Although we're not coastal, but.
I would say we're not, yeah, we're Piedmont.
Right, but.
You know, there there is a, there there is a Piedmont, you know, style of construction from way back when too.
Right.
I think it's like hardy plank and tin roof. Ford and Baton.
Alright.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'm gonna write all these notes down, so don't forget anything. Um, but anyway, I've pulled out here, I have, I did actually, I was, I was able to do a search up, but in uh, what is this, one, I feel, I I would have passed this like three times, one fifty-one, one forty-five D is the section that um, for some reason it was adopted, but uh it describes what signs were thought to be allowed in the Village Center District even though that wasn't a district yet.
Oh, there's, there's more revisions to the ordinance.
Huh?
It's not Village Center anymore.
Yes, yes.
You've gotta change all those.
Um. Alright, so that's, that's basically, I mean, that's the start of it, um, you see the, I I hope that's, it's made it clear how form-based code will approach the subject in a very more, a more visual and um more universally understandable way, you know, it'll, it'll be very clear to people, you know, these are the kinds of buildings that would be allowed. Um, and as I showed you in the uh table of contents, you know, we would, we would have all sorts of requirements for how the look of the 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 open space uh would be regulated and the view sheds, the streetscapes, signage, everything um would be kind of regulated in a more visual way, the D word wouldn't even be um included anywhere in the uh um, the district, that being density, um, we would just basically regulate the district on the look of it. And of course permitted uses.
So Rohit, having said that, that we're not gonna, we're not gonna use that word, and I'm I'm glad, um, however
Yes.
having your homes have the potential for that impact.
Yes, yes, and what I intend to do.
Even if we don't, okay.
Yes, what I intend to do between now and the next meeting, as today's meeting was just a concept, and next meeting we'll talk about the content. I hope to a little bit, not like make everyone's site plan, but do a little reverse engineering on the minimum lot sizes so that, you know, if you count in the thirty percent, you know, open space and the 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 very large buffers and the back has to be the Marvin vernacular type houses, um, then um, how many, like, how many houses would roughly fit? And I can give you that um based on the lot sizes, I already think I wanna change it from eight thousand to ten thousand square feet, but even then, you're probably you're still looking at less than one unit per acre, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, but nothing like you know, nothing like one point five or two units per acre, even though, um, like you look at courtyards, it was sixty patio homes on twenty acres because the whole property was full of patio homes. But when you, when you incorporate the fact that, you know, we're having all these buffers and um open space and the back would be larger lots, very, very much, you know v- a very limited portion of the property would be allowed to have these homes. And that would roughly result in one unit per acre or less, even though we're not saying that.
So that would be, you know, per acre of parent tract.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Of of that, you know, of that forty acres or whatever it may be.
Right, so the, like the the Argy property of eleven acres, um, if uh you know patio homes were only allowed in the back third, then you'd still only fit about seven or eight houses. And the venture property, if, the same thing, you know, if you're only allowing houses in the back third, you're only allowing about seven or eight houses on thirteen acres. Same with the the Russ Odell and uh previous, you know, block. If uh, if you only allow houses in the back third or half, but then allow them to be, you know, third or half acre lots um, again, roughly one unit per acre results in, we were not regulating that, but I'm gonna do a little bit of reverse engineering to
Mm-hmm.
to kind of constrain it that way. Does that answer your question?
Maybe, I um I have some hesitancy about that, but let's, I'll save my hesitancy and be optimistic and look forward to seeing what you present next time, but I just, I
Sure.
I I don't know how patio homes fit into Marvin, um especially when you talk about the Marvin vernacular, I mean, I can, I guess maybe it's the hardy plank and the tin roof on the top, I don't, but I don't understand how that, um we're talking about, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar homes across the street, you know, not quite across the street, but roughly across the street, it just
Hmm.
I don't know, I'm struggling with it.
So is there, is there a, I think, I think several people have said this already now, is there a concept that we don't really even include the Marvin vernacular or patio homes and just kind of stick to the the cottage and the Charleston and the the village house kind of homes?
Well, I think, I guess my biggest concern and ultimately what it boils down to is that patio homes imply density, and if we're looking at having it one house per acre roughly, why can't we leave it at one house per acre, like why do we have to open it up to putting more houses on smaller lots, like, I I don't understand when everybody is against the D word to the point where you don't wanna put density in this, then why would we put homes in there that increase
Mm-hmm.
density, even if we're only increasing the density in thirty percent of the area, yada, 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 that's still a higher density in that area.
Mm-hmm.
What about brownstones?
But what, like tower homes?
Yeah.
No, brownstones, you know, like, what about those type of homes? Those, those are, those is increased density, they're, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars, three thousand square foot brownstone homes.
Hmm.
Go up to Brooklyn, take a look at those.
Yeah.
Those are beautiful.
But yeah, I guess the trade-off there would be, you know, go back to the Marvin Marvin uh branch sub, you know, flat that we just looked at, is smaller lots, but
Mm-hmm.
you know, the trade-off there is that it's only on, you know, we're, we are saving green space.
Right, I think, I think that's, that's, um, that's a really good point, there, you know, half acre and two-thirds acre lots here.
Where- whereas if it was just like Marvin Creek right beside it, you know.
But y'all, that's a developer setting that up.
No, I'm just.
That's a developer saying, coming in with a plan, saying that they want to do this, I want, I don't want us to make the plan for the developer by putting any, I I I just wanna be very careful and not do that, and and Rohit, I do think that this is this setup is much better than some of the other drafts that we've seen, and I I appreciate the work you put into it since the last time I saw you, this is fantastic, um.
But you know, the point I was making is comparing the two, you know, the the existing Marvin Creek to this, you know, there there basically is no open space uh or or preserved green space in Marvin Creek. Uh, whereas there'd be preserved green space on the, the proposed development.
Right.
That there, you know, would not be any future homes or anything there.
Right, the benefit, the amenity of allowing homes to be condensed is that we would require that thirty percent, as I said to be publicly usable space.
Yeah.
Or even in a conservation subdivision like this one today, we don't require that the conservation area is publicly usable.
Yeah.
Just that it's not developed. And in a lot of cases, like in this case and in Markcroft, it's done so because they physically can't develop it.
About, I was just, you know, that, what I'm saying is there's the trade-off of.
Right, that is the trade-off.
Of smaller lots, but with more public open space.
Right.
But anyway, and I'm not proving one way or the other, I'm just a conversation there.
Mm-hmm. I think, I I I really do think that's my, also my best answer to Melinda's question there, why even allow denser housing, um well, I mean, it 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 just, it really just comes back to that, like, we do have a one unit per acre kind of character in Marvin, but uh the really, the only way to um demand open space is to offer that basically back um to the property owners, which is to you know, say, you know, put the same amount of houses in a small amount of space and give us thirty percent of publicly usable space.
Yeah.
It kind of works like that. It will work like that, it will be a very beautiful, um, you know, thirty percent of a hundred and twenty acres is forty acres, um like Art Marvin Eford Park is only twenty-seven acres, so if we're talking about preserving forty something acres um as publicly usable space, that will be a huge um gain uh to the character here, uh, to the like, the, you know, the livability, the sense of community.
Uh, I appreciate that, but just playing devil's advocate, maybe this is for next week's conversation, so, or next meeting, so feel free to cut me off if that's the case. But that forty, those forty acres, they they may not be congruent, right, because this sets it up to where effectively we could end up piecemealing together our heritage district. Now, given the parameters are set, but if the previous property sold and they were, right, so that's residential only, and then the venture property sells and that's the mixed use. I mean, we could end up with, I mean, we're not, we do not have forty acres altogether, I mean, we may end up with forty acres, but it may be an acre here and three acres there and a half acre here, I mean right, like there's a chance that this doesn't end up turning into a forty acre park.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't ever mean to suggest that it would be one forty acre park, it was never, it was never going to be one forty acre park.
Sure, but I'm just.
It would be a con- it would be a sum total of forty additional acres of publicly usable space.
And I guess I'll look forward to reading how we define publicly usable, because if it's the pond
Mm-hmm.
right, that's on the, on the back of the let property is is on.
Right. I I've actually worked on that a little bit, um, here, in in my draft, I've kind of defined, the pond could be used if, you know, there's trails built around it and you could fish in it, um, the church grove could be used if um, you know, if that could be a picnic area, um the uh wetlands could be used if it was made into a wetland park, that kind of thing, um have to find where it is, but again, I I really didn't wanna talk about the content today, but I did, I did start work on basically defining uh publicly, you know, usable open space as opposed to just like, you know, a wetland is not publicly usable unless there's some sort of like boardwalk park or something.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well then I'll, I'll save my content questions and I can tell you've done a lot of work, so thank you Rohit, this is I think this is definitely a step in the, in the direction, um, that I can see getting behind, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, thank you very much for that support. Um, I also hope that uh, this will get everyone, you know, even people who are opposed to the district outright may be at least amenable to the idea that this will demand there not to be, you know, strip malls and, um, they will demand a lot of open space and actually visualize it.
Well, I think it's gonna be a, uh, yeah, visualization for people to understand, because it's just a different concept.
Right.
Totally different concept.
Okay, um, with that said, um, is there any other questions on the, basically just the base question, which was the transition into this form-based code and what would it would look like? What it would be in it?
Alright.
Rohit, can I make one more recommendation before you come back for us to talk about content?
Sure, sure.
I'd like to give you the same recommendation that we gave the developers, and that's I would come up with a traffic mitigation plan. Cause currently the idea even being right, you know, fifty feet off the, off of Newtown Road is terrifying to me, so.
Sure.
Let's work, let's work that into this as well.
Alright, I made, I'm I'm making that note. Okay.
Yeah, and you know, one thing, if if we end up with Marvin owning Newtown Road, you know, from roundabout to the state line, then it'll make it easier for us to incorporate traffic calming features.
Yes. That is definitely a goal, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, uh. No other questions or comments on that, on the, this item? Movement, action items?
Okay, Rohit will review discussions that led to the reduction of Elysian Field setback to eighty-five feet, or view shed, actually. View shed. Um, and I, you might have already done this, but you had said we'll add a traffic mitigation plan to the form, was it the form-based code?
Um.
Or is it, what is that, not from your column?
It's more like, um, I think, if if I can paraphrase, is the comment was to, um, basically compel anyone who is interested in developing these properties to propose
Gotcha.
traffic mitigation solutions. And then perhaps we can take their proposals and put in the form-based code, but it would not be up to me to come up with.
Okay, I just wanna add that one then.
Well paraphrased there? Okay. Good.
Cool.
Wait, why, why would you not, why would we not wanna come up with what those, what that mitigation plan is?
Well, we have some ideas on, I have some ideas on my end. I've come up with them almost a year ago. I have a list of about five of them. But we should also, I think Melinda's comment is that we should also compel the people who would be benefiting from having more houses in their properties to, you know, also come up with the mitigation, um, kind of like proposals.
Would it be, whether it be houses or or small commercial buildings?
Right.
Okay.
Right, Melinda?
I was thinking they should pay for the study. If we need to do a study to come up with like, how do we actually take people from fifty miles an hour to twenty-five so that the people that buy the patio homes that are fifty-five and over are not gonna impact our school system? Don't die going to get ice cream? Like, my thought was genuinely that that we probably need professionals, and I don't, I don't, I mean, no disrespect, Rohit, but like, we actually need professionals to do.
No, I I I understand what you're saying. Uh, there is a, there's a field of people, traffic engineers like uh, Kim Lee Horn and whatnot, uh, that do traffic impact analysis and they're kind of required for all developments. Um, and in fact, this is already kind of established. I I basically put a budget, um, request for a traffic impact analysis um, for the next fiscal year for this district and council.
I think they just took that out.
Yes, council did decide that they were not interested in paying for it and that the developers would pay for it, so, um, we, we're, we're on the same page there.
I, okay, for for the district, so what what about for Marvin in particular? Cause we've got two roads, one a Marvin road and one an NCDOT road
Mm-hmm.
that have pretty high speeding incidences that lead to, um, accidents and death, um, unfortunately, so I thought that this was, the traffic calming was a priority overall.
I mean, that's still, that's still a priority overall. Um, I did request a budget for uh, the full cost of a beacon uh, crossing and I think that was approved. Uh, well, it wasn't denied the last time I heard it, um, but uh, over on this side, on Newtown Road here, um, there are a lot of ways that we can also, from our end, if we own the road, we can reduce the speed limit and enforce it, but we can also add, um, you know, we can add raised crosswalks, which will force uh, people to drive slower over them. Um, we can change the material in some places. Um, we can add street furniture right up against the the edge of pavement, which always slows people down.
Big speed humps.
Yeah, uh, speed humps, in fact, even raised intersections aren't that expensive, um.
What about those little bumps? I I have another word for them, but I can't say them, if I'm like, from Texas, so. They're really those little bumps that they put, you know, almost like a, like, crosswalk style?
Like. Um, you mean like domes? Uh, they just drive over and they make you go bump? Or uh, like actual like speed bumps?
They look like, they look like, um, pet, not pet, with this little sh, there used to be these little sheets of candy. It was like a long piece of paper and they have little dots. They're called, I don't know, and you totally kill them on my, totally dangerous, my fault, anyone remember them?
Try to, try to.
I'm lost.
Send me, send me an email about it. Um, I would love to, love to figure out what you're talking about, because I'm looking for all solutions, you know, I've made a list of them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find them, I'll find them.
That.
No, I'm just, no dislying it, it's not appropriate, so.
Put Ardrig, keep big trucks after.
Yeah.
Yeah, the big problem is NCDOT's approval, as long as they own that road, they're just.
Right.
We ain't getting none of that.
We're not getting anything approved.
Right, so that's, that's a process that council will work in on, but I think we're going off topic, because we're.
Yeah.
We are, we are way off topic.
In any case, there's a new action item. Kelly's gonna try to figure out the name of those cotton candy.
I I I, we won't make that official.
Okay, any other action items?
We're good.
Alright, board member comments? Who wants to start? Uh, looking at the screen, Melinda, any additional comment?
I think I've made enough for this evening, so thank you, thank you all for your, for your heart. Well, well done.
Kelly? Any comment?
Uh, no comments, but like, here is, I don't know, can't see.
Uh, go, move your, over to the right a little bit, yeah, there. Oh, wait, no, you had it, just.
I'm sorry, I was trying to, I can't see.
Okay, there, yeah.
That. What you said.
I don't know what that is.
Uh, I can sort of, yeah.
Like, I've never seen these?
I've, I've, I've never seen that, but thanks for, thanks for looking it up. That's fascinating.
No. Any comments?
No comments, no comments.
No comments.
Parag, comments? Are you there? Michael?
Well, I was gonna welcome Parag. I didn't get a chance, so I just welcomed him to the board and, um, and that's my only comment.
Alright, uh, I'd like to compliment everybody. I think it's been a very productive, uh, and expeditious meeting tonight. Uh, I think we've done a good job.
Thank you. It also helps we didn't have any uh, conditional use permits today.
Don't jinx it, Rohit.
No, I haven't, I haven't got any last month and I haven't got any this month, so.
Hush.
Okay, alright, alright.
Okay. Alright, nothing else? Uh, motion to adjourn?
At eight ten P M.
Anybody? Melinda, second? Kelly, all in favor? Unanimous.